Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:39. Before we begin the meeting tonight, I'd like to ask everyone if you would please join me in a moment of silence. On April 30th, the North Reading Public Schools community, actually the community of North Reading as a whole, lost a beloved educator in Charlie Jones. Mr. Jones was a teacher of social studies and administrator at North Reading Middle School for many, many years. He passed away after a very brief illness. And his legacy, I know, will live on for many, many years. In fact, those of you who may either have students at the middle school, or when you do come to North Reading Middle School, it was not long ago that the connecting car for North Reading Middle School was named in his account. He was a wonderful man, a very talented and gifted educator. And I'd like to ask you all if you would please join me in a moment of silence for this moment. Thank you. At this time, Superintendent, I will ask for nominations for chairman of the North Reading School.
I would like to nominate Scott Buckley for the chair.
So, the nominee is Mr. Buckley for chair. Are they official nominations? Okay, at this time, I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Buckley, chairman of the North Reading School.
I would like to nominate Scott Buckley for chair.
There is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Buckley, congratulations.
Very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, we'll defer to the subcommittee, but why don't we try to reorganize another position? So, do you need a... Do you have any nominations for the vice chair this year?
I would like to nominate myself as vice chair.
Okay. Other nominations for vice chair? Okay, with a motion to have Janine be the vice chairman. With a motion, second, by Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Unanimous. Okay. It's now secretary. The nomination for secretary.
I nominate Mr. Chris Papabasileos. Good. All right. Head secretary. It's normally kind of like the tradition with the kid on the block gets the secretary position because there's so much that you have to do.
All right. Any other nomination? Am I hearing none? Or a motion?
Make a motion to nominate Chris Papabasileos. That's the lead. Head secretary of the subcommittee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Unanimous. One more. Legislative representative. Nomination for the legislative representative.
I don't want to nominate someone who doesn't love it.
Diana is right now.
Which one did you want to give to her?
If Diana wants to have you, then she should because she ordered it down to the leadership. So, it's up to you. I'm happy to continue.
I'll continue. Then I can say nominate Janine Ababell to be the legislative leader.
Second? Okay. With a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Unanimous. Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay. So, we have to do subcommittee assignments, but I think we'll skip that because we have a lot of guests today, so... Oh, yeah, we will call... I think we'll do the student first, yeah. So, you don't want to watch them. Okay, well, let's do the report first. So, we are blessed to have Samantha Galvin with us today. She is class 2020, and she will present the student report.
Hi, everyone. So, I'm going to start by talking about the Little League Athletics Matters. So, over the weekend, Girls' Track had several athletes qualified for Nationals in the shuttle hurdle event. We had Ali Grasso, Kate Gortney, as well as Grant and Megan Waller, all qualified. Ali Grasso also qualified for the triple jump, and his team of college qualified in the steeplechase. The steeplechase is like a 3K with hurdles, and one of the hurdles is with water. So, usually a normal event that happens. Girls' softball has also been having an amazing season with 10 wins and only one loss. And Girls' Track last Wednesday came to champions, going undefeated all season. Most of the other sports teams have been having growing seasons due to the fact that they also made achievements last year. Moving on to academics. It's been quite a stressful last two weeks for many students because AP testing has been going on. It started last Monday with AP government and will end on Friday with AC computer science. Seventy new National Honor Society members were also inducted into the society on May 9th, meeting their requirements for a 35 GPA. And Student Recognition Night will be Thursday, May 24th, and many students will be awarded for their academic endeavors throughout the year. And as graduation is coming up, the list of the 2019 honor graduates has been posted. Any student who maintained an average of 85% or higher for the majority of their high school career were eligible to receive academic honors. We also have a lot going on lately with fine arts. There has been a senior art show displayed on Main Street showcasing many of the seniors' work projects. That includes Casey Robards, Chloe Koblis, Flora Wagner, Natalia Roll, and Kat Colm. Notorious participated in acapella in a day over the weekend, and they did this at Wakefield High School. My friend Sam, who's on Notorious, made sure to tell me all about it. He said, "Everyone in the group loves the event so much because you get to meet students who do acapella from all over, and they just get to sing all day and improve their skills together and share their love of acapella with one another." Masters will also be holding nominations for elections next year. And the high school spring concert is May 22nd at 7:00 p.m. That includes performances from pretty much every group in the high school: the marching band, the chorus, the jazz band, and Notorious. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and the theme for the week was teaching in the wild. Student council members worked really hard to thank the teachers for all their hard work. Lizzie Barrett was one of the leaders of that charge. The school's student leadership and mentoring program chose new members for next year and elected board members. And we will be holding our core training sessions with Deb and Dana May 27th and 28th. These are always really constructive, and everyone kind of comes back to school having learned a lot about themselves and how they can be better leaders for next year. Elections for next year's student council members and class officers are also coming up. They're starting on the 15th, and then in the consecutive days after that, we'll start with senior class, go to junior class, and then go to sophomore class. The health teachers, Ms. Whitney and Mr. Costello, have been working to create a youth action team to promote healthy behaviors within North Reading High School and just in the greater community as a whole. And we've also... Many other clubs have been doing a lot of charity work, with book club, holding a book drive, collecting over 500 books for various charities, such as Books for Africa, Rosie's Place, and Bolving Prisons. And Eco Team also collected and lay leaves shoes for a company which plants trees for every pair of shoes collected, and then also donates those shoes. For the student report today, I chose to bring in... Or the student piece of work, I chose to bring in an essay that I did for my AP English class. As exams have been coming up, our teacher decided every class she'd give us the timed writings and the timed multiple choice, so we'd be really prepared for the exam. And this was the synthesis essay. So, basically, we get seven documents and an argument, and we either have to agree, disagree, or modify the argument. And the topic for this specific synthesis essay was whether or not plastic bag should be banned in our own community. And I thought this topic was really interesting because the question directly asked about our specific community. So, not only did we have to think about the problem, but we had to think about how it applied to North Reading. And I thought it was really interesting to not only argue for ourselves, but for the town. Thank you.
Questions?
Do you remember me in this essay?
Yeah.
So, which is better, being young or being... They're both good for different reasons.
Yes!
Very difficult matter.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, before we go to the little schools, there's one more to call up. Does any... We have public input at the beginning of the meeting. Does anybody here have any topics that are not currently on the agenda they would like to speak about? All right. Name none. To turn it over to our gracious host, Mrs. Molly. Thank you for hosting us today.
Thank you very much for being here, everybody. Good evening, and welcome to the little schools. I'd like to extend my congratulations to the newly re-elected and newly elected school community members. Welcome, and we are so happy to have you here this evening. Each year when we know the school committee is coming, the staff and I get together and we start brainstorming ideas about the presentation. Usually, we try to razzle-dazzle you with little technology, maybe a song we dance. This year, being so close to Memorial Day, we decided to recreate a presentation that we had done about three or four years ago because so many of the school committee are new, and we wanted to make sure that you had the pleasure of seeing the presentation. And our wonderful students and their national monument presentations, all of which they have prepared completely on their own with very little adult intervention. These were not done at home, they were done in the school, of their own two hands. So, we'll be talking to you a little bit about that. I'd like to thank the fourth grade team of Ms. Christine Gates, Mr. Michael Maloney, and Mrs. Lesley Mizony, who has worked tirelessly with the children for the last couple of weeks to prepare them for the presentation that you are about to see. We're very proud of our social studies program here at the little school. We start in kindergarten teaching the children social studies, but it really takes on an extra special focus in fourth and fifth grade. We have dedicated blocks of time for social studies, and so the children will be sharing a little bit of what they learned this year in the fourth grade, and also talking to you about America's White Table, which honors fallen soldiers in nation's wars of the past and present. So, with that being said, we'd like to ask you all to please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the National Anthem. This is the way that we start our day every day at the little schools, by saying the pledge and singing the National Anthem. So, if anybody would join us, our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scotty and Ellen?
Yep. Here, just take them.
One here.
Oh, say, can you see why the dawn's early light were so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose much stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight for the land, barsy, washed, was so gallant we streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bonger's sting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, the bells that start to spangle and how yet wait for the landing of the free and the home of the brave?
And that was Scotty Costello and Ellen Darling. Nice job. Very nice job.
Good evening. Welcome, Superintendent Bernard, Mr. Conley, Principal Molly, school committee, parents, teachers, and friends. Since Memorial Day is soon approaching, we thought we'd use it as our presentation theme.
We will begin our portion of the program by explaining the significance of Memorial Day and America's White Table, followed by a national monument presentation.
Memorial Day is always the last Monday in May. It is not this day off from work or school. Memorial Day is the day to remember those who have died, even though those who have died while serving in the military.
Many of the celebrations on Memorial Day include the military. For example, the Air Force may supply special planes and jets for everyone to see. The Navy may also let people explore the inside world battleships. Other military groups may hold drills to show how they do some of their tasks, like saving people from a burning ship.
Another way to celebrate Memorial Day is to fly the American flag at half-staff instead of flying it all the way to the top of the flagpole. The flag is raised only halfway. Take a look at the flags at the police or fire stations. Many are raised at half-staff of Memorial Day.
At Washington, DC, people have many events to celebrate Memorial Day. Arlington National Cemetery is a place where Union soldiers were buried in Civil War. Since then, soldiers from other wars have been buried in the Arlington National Cemetery.
On Memorial Day, thousands of soldiers place a small flag on each grave. The President of the United States will also place flowers at the Tomb of the Unknowns. The Tomb of the Unknowns is the place to honor those who have died, even though we don't know the soldiers' names.
So, one symbol of Memorial Day has long been the red coffee, and it comes from a poem in Glanville's Fields written by Liliana Michael. So, the poem is included. I'm not going to read it for you, but it's included on your little brochure that you have here. We do have a posse for you, each of you. Please feel free to wear them proudly on Memorial Day as a symbol of remembrance.
America's White Table represents every great child of military, and it's a universal sign of reverence for all soldiers. As symbol of missing and captive service members, the MIA POW table began during the war in Vietnam.
A group called the Red River Valley Fighters Pilots Association, or the RED, parrots at the first MIA POW Remembrance Table during the Vietnam War. This daring group of airmen came from different branches of America's armed forces.
The missions were dangerous. The pilots who strayed from their brotherhood of courage and shared knowledge. In the spirit of that brotherhood, the Red Brats pledged themselves to taking care of their own and having reunions once the war ended.
It was at these reunions that the first MIA POW tables set in remembrance of fallen and missing comrades. The Remembrance Table led men astray into all military dynamo ceremonies.
Mike, before you made it together.
I have to say a morning. Of toast. Oh, my. Stop it.
Just after the ceremony. Yes, there is a toast. With the last toast, you do the last toast. To remember. To remember until they come home.
We live for an army in the blood and the common life of the everybody in the table.
Good job, Randy.
Sometimes the items on the table vary from ceremony to ceremony. For example, uniform hats for all the service branches can be placed around the table. The table is a tribute to our finest and greatest, those who wait and hope and believe in the dream of freedom with every breath they take on foreign soil and whose spirits live on in all of us. The POW flag, by the way.
You are not forgotten. So long, there is one left, and in whom you remember your names. Let us now take a moment of silence.
Thank you. We will talk about the objects on America's White Table and what they represent. The small brown table represents one missing or captured soldier's battle against many.
The white tablecloth represents soldier's pure heart when answering his call to duty.
The lemon slice and grains of salt represent a captured soldier's bitter fate in his family's tears.
The empty chair represents the soldier who won't be there for dinner.
The black napkin represents the sorrow of being captured.
The overturned glass represents the meal that will be.
The white candle represents peace.
The red rose within the vase tied with a red ribbon represents the hope that the missing will return someday.
This concludes our explanation of America's White Table, its significance, and symbolism.
The entire fourth grade has been busy working on researching and creating a national monument. Each student will now share an interesting fact of his or her monument.
I researched the Golden Gate Bridge. And one interesting fact about the Golden Gate Bridge is that it was so big, California, where the bridge is located, where it had a steel during its construction.
I researched the Alamo. An interesting fact about the Battle of the Alamo is that during the Battle of the Alamo, the Texans were in a bad mood issues. They had to use their rifles as clubs.
I have been researching the Seattle Space Needle. An interesting fact about Seattle Space Needle is that the top actually represents the flying saucers.
I researched Route 66. One interesting fact about Route 66 is that after World War II, it was for anyone who wanted to travel instead of paying a military vote. This means people who wanted to cross the country could say Route 66 was a very convenient road.
I researched the Bunker Hill Monument. One interesting fact about the Bunker Hill Monument is that it only started at an 18-foot monument, but now it's a 221-foot monument.
I researched the Golden Gate Bridge. One interesting fact about the Golden Gate Bridge is that the construction was so difficult that eleven people fell off the bridge in hospital.
I worked on the Arlington National Cemetery. The Arlington National Cemetery hosted the first National Memorial Day in celebration of 1868, what they call a decoration day. On Memorial Day, each gravestone is marked with a US flag.
My monument is Billiken Hall. Billiken Hall has 80 feet tall, 188 feet long, and 118 feet wide. Can you imagine a human being 80 feet tall and 180 feet wide? Why? That would be incredible.
My monument is the Washington Monument. And one fact about it is that it was damaged by an earthquake on August 24th, 2011. The monument was closed. There were minor injuries, but thankfully, everyone got rescued.
And that's the monument I wish that... We love those... We will have to respect it that they hurt us. How does it... Who designed the wall? Did you know that they're college students? Oh, yeah. Why are we the ones that she designed the wall?
Try research the World War II memorial. One fact that I found fascinating is that there are 4,000 stars, and each star honors 100 of the 400,000 members of the US Armed Forces who died in the war.
I researched the Capitol Building. There's approximately 540 rooms, including reception rooms and offices. Can you imagine at least 300 meetings going on at once? Zach will now play tasks to honor the fallen soldiers who have served our country.
Hey, everyone want to take a look at the...
We have one more little thing.
Oh, yeah, one more thing first. Okay, one more thing.
Some of us are 11, and others of us are nine and 10, so it is difficult to understand the deaths of soldiers, women, and men.
But there is one thing we all understand. It's that we should respect and appreciate how they fought for our freedom in our land. We need to remember the injured and those who lost their lives. Those who suffered and sacrificed, even had family, husbands, and wives.
They left their footprints of liberty for all of us to follow. Without their courage and bravery, our life would be more hollow.
So, when life brings you troubles and you lose your footing on the ground, remember those who have been silenced, who will never again make a sound.
Look at the ocean, smell the flowers, listen to the birds singing. The world is ours. Taste the air, feel the heat from the sun above, and thank the soldiers for defending the land we love.
This concludes the fourth grade presentation. We also...
We all hope you enjoy the of the rooms of what has been going on here in the classroom at the E U.
Would you take a look? Yes, I'll go take a look at these. Has any of you visited the ones that you made?
No.
Bunker Hill.
How long has it taken for it to start?
Okay. Back to the meeting. I think if you're in the back row, I doubt it can be new for the front, right? Okay, so we've got to go back to the new business reorganization and talk about the subcommittees. Bernard has the subcommittee assignment. Do you want to just kind of chat with who wants to do various positions? So the policy subcommittee is the first one. So traditionally, we've had the new person to do the kind of round the policy subcommittee. And so, so would you be interested, Chris, in being one of them?
Sure.
And then do we have other people that are interested in the nominee? Richard, Diana, you guys have been on it either do it.
Yeah, same, but I don't feel strongly aware of others. If you feel very strongly, you'll just sort of take that.
It's both times for me to sort of...
Okay, so does it tie in for you before school with Chris? What time do you do it?
We typically get it before class.
Okay. You mean you do that, Chris? Just want some general...
Yeah, it's very... You just try to pick what day...
Sure, yeah. Four P M generally.
I'm also going to do like...
Yeah, early morning committee is about there. I wanted to four P M. Yeah. Okay. Bernard, I think we don't need nominations.
I think if you were... If there's consensus, I think you're fine.
Okay, so Chris and Rich on policy. Athletic, so athletic was Diana and Mel in the past. So Diana, would you like to stay on athletics?
Although I can't make the meeting tomorrow.
Okay, I would be okay if that somebody helps. Now, that meeting is usually afternoon.
It's twelve thirty. And it needs to be done.
I can do that.
That's difficult for me. Midday is difficult to do.
I'm usually okay.
Okay, okay. There is. I'm guessing for a lot of midday is often used well, so.
Unfortunately, it's not like that, but I'd like to stay.
Okay, Diana and Janine. Diana and Janine for athletics subcommittee. The evaluation subcommittee. So the past, this has been Janine and Rich have had this here and... I'm going to hear Chris with all my hair.
If I'm on and I'm on and if I'm not and not, I find either way.
It's really just...
It's not very difficult.
Yeah, you don't meet until the spring or late winter, but it's just four days. The evaluations is a commitment.
Well, Janine, you're going to have a lot of responsibility with finance planning and vice chair. And then as the chair.
Only just barely got my mind around the process the first time, so another time through is probably good.
Yeah, then, you know, if you ever have questions, please reach out and ask to...
Chris and Rich are going to be together again. Okay, budget and finance subcommittee. These are two members. So this was Rich and me this year. Since the chair and the vice chair are the finance planning team, I think it's useful that at least one of us be on there. I'd be willing to stay on it. And I don't know if somebody else is interested in doing that. I think we just met once or twice last year just to kind of talk about... Before the original budget was presented. The budget one that we did, we just met with John before.
Is this the one where we might go down?
It's, it was one meeting.
We've only done it one year, so what did it?
Two years.
Oh, it's the second year that's been on.
Well, I... If we're to do anything, I would say the contracts didn't, we didn't write any at all this year. But the contracts are also important because when we, we have some negotiations coming up. And I think we should do that. We could combine the two. I wouldn't mind combining the budget and the contract. So budget and contract committee. Especially with a new superintendent, it might be nice to have at least one meeting before.
So budget and contracts.
Budget and contract combined into one.
Now, is that a rule that needs to be done? So combine.
You formalized the two committees.
We can just put the same number.
I think you could, but you could do that too.
That's what we did this year.
And then just we can combine meetings.
So why don't we do that then? Want to keep them and then? Keep them and then so I'd be interested in staying out those.
That's fine.
I had done a spreadsheet of the contracts, just the various union contracts, just to be able to compare across. Because one thing you've tried to do is have some... Get some uniformity between the agreements because you have to get different people negotiating different contracts. I'd be interested. Anybody?
So are we combining the budget and the contract? I think we're right.
We'll keep them separate, but it'll be the same.
Oh, okay. So.
Okay, I'm going to do the good one.
All right, so.
I'll be glad that I took notice emails about contracts this year. But I didn't really ignore, but I didn't get too upset.
I guess it... So that's E as well. Okay, the finance subcommittee, this is a new one. And the timing of this would be probably after school.
We believe in two-thirds to accommodate the two, uh, three teachers. But we also get out of school.
And we also were thinking four meetings a year or so.
Yes, I actually met with a couple of teachers, Mrs. Kim is a listener, who talked about that. And they seemed to think that that was reasonable for maybe a, a longest meeting might be helpful.
I was going to suggest even that or even before the end year.
Yeah, because they think because there's some decisions they might like to have made before school starts.
Yeah, sure.
I told them I would share that and it didn't matter to me. I thought we could probably mutually agree.
I know everyone knows that's definitely a committee I'm interested in.
Rich and me or Chris?
Yeah, I'm used to do, but I'm... There are a few...
I can add to these things in.
Rich and Janine are interested in that one? Why not?
Are you going to take in the...
Yeah, again, it's at the end where we say if somebody has too many, we can just go back right now.
Why don't you bring Rich up? You gave some buddy-buddy.
I know, you guys have... So Door Camp Advisory Board, this has been me the last couple of years. It's going to one meeting a month and just seeing what's going on with Door Camp. I'm happy to do it if nobody else wants to do it or somebody would like to do it. I'm happy to not do it. Or whatever, go on. It's in the evening, Tuesday, seven o'clock meeting.
You know, Scott, you, I'll, I'll do that.
I mean, you already have to agree right now. I mean, if you...
Yeah, like, um, in the evenings, if you say.
Okay, if you want to do it, that's fine. Have something new.
Give me, give me a chance to do something different.
Okay, Rich can do that one. So finance planning team would be Janine and myself. And just so Chris, if you don't know, the finance planning team is the chair and the vice chair of the school committee, the select board. It's also the superintendent, the town administrator, and finance groups on both sides. And the shared vice chair of the finance committee. Ten, ten people.
That's all.
Ten people. And just looking, book tracking expenses, revenues.
We need, we need a walk.
Beginning of that much, at the end, there was one meeting back four or five times.
We need a walk, Richard.
Okay. So the C I P C, Diana's on that was a three-year appointment last year. So just to kind of note that she's on that one still. So that gives Diana four and then Substance Abuse Coalition. We have an appointment with Diana here or who's on that right now?
I am.
When does that meet at?
It meets around ten o'clock.
That's a possible.
Yeah.
It's a certain Tuesday at the month.
Yeah. Yeah, Sam thinks it's something part of the two, but yeah, it's usually ten o'clock at least.
We got that many hard ones, Chris, then. Teaching, yes.
If you're liable to stay on it, it...
I do need a fourth one. And then the Special Education Parent Advisory Council created that this year. I was the liaison. I've been going to the meetings. I don't care. I mean, I plan on going either way as a, as a parent, but I'm happy to stay on as the liaison. See, I don't want to have too many, too many members there.
Anybody's fun.
I'm happy to be on there, so. So that would give all of us four with the exception of Chris for two. And then we have, we also were going to talk about the, um, the search committee as well. We should probably do that at this point in time as well.
Sure. Yeah, on the issue of the, of the balance of the.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of these, not a lot of.
Many of these are during.
I'm, we're.
During the day, I could do it. Um, time should be doable, but Rich already informed you and said specifically that you're interested in that.
That one, I am particularly.
The last thing I was trying to. You want to add a question? If you feel overextended with four plus search committee.
Yeah, that's. I don't feel overextended, but I don't want to give you an opportunity to.
So, so wait, so what are we, what are we discussing here?
Sorry, I was just, I was just saying that, um, uh, I could do the fun, right? Schedule wise, that was something that Rich was explicitly passionate about.
Yeah, great.
Um, uh, I was saying, he says he's not overextended, but if he were, then we're both from students. Search committee, that might be under, I think, the funds and the schedule, I'm also putting, um, into positive.
Oh, I mean, again, we, let's, well, I mean, let's talk about it. We, we talked in the, in the workshop about it a little bit. I mean, I still think, again, I, I, if three people are interested, I mean, I think Janine should be on, I think Janine should share. She's been here the longest, she's run the evaluation the last however many years, so I think that's a good position for her. I would prefer to Rich just because the process had begun a little bit and felt at the past meeting that, you know, Rich depended. Again, I mean, if everybody's called here, but the, I mean, the other thing is the even and out. There are other positions that you, I mean, we can go back and look at some of the other ones as well. Are there other things that don't need? I mean, NOR Cam was going to be Rich, I mean, that's the evening one, I don't know if you wanted to do NOR Cam or if you wanted to do.
It would fit, um, you know, I, if, as I said this previously, the, uh, the thing that everyone should sit in the business sector best would be the search committee. Um, there are a couple other areas that if people agree on, or it should matter, find things that fit if that works. I feel confident in that, too.
Well, I mean, I, I, I did get, it seems like we can, we can, we should take a vote on the, why don't we take a vote on that one then? So for the, for the, for the subcommittee, for the search committee, the superintendent search committee.
Well, that one would need to be a vote accordingly with Mr. Fisher.
Ultimately, the other parties.
It would be a vote either way.
Yes.
Yeah, he's saying we should appoint it either way to, uh, for that. And so, um, for, why don't we do one at, one at a time? For the chair, do you want to do? Oh, sure. We got a nomination for the chair, and so, I mean, I, I would, I mean, maybe we want a nomination for the chair.
Nomination.
Okay. Second.
One second.
So all in favor of Janine as the chair of the superintendent search committee?
Okay.
Vote. Ready to hand this?
Okay.
And so then.
I never saw that.
For the second.
We don't, I mean, we don't need to have a vote, I'll, I'll leave it to Rich because, uh, like you said, defer, I'll, I'll defer to Rich. And now that we've decided, sometimes you can decide, there's no arguments.
Okay, so. Okay, so we're good, we're, we have to, we have to establish it and make a vote either way.
Okay.
So, um, so then we'll advocate a motion for the second school committee member on the subcommittee, uh, the search committee superintendent. Have any nominations?
Uh, Rich.
Any other nominations? Open motion to. Oh, sure. Well, I was gonna, I was gonna, nomination, I was gonna do the second, or a motion for the second by Chris and. Vote in favor, so all in favor of Rich as the second member. I, I'm opposed. Okay, you can hand this. So that does give Rich and Janine both five subcommittees, and I do think it'd be good to try to find a role for Chris as well. But some other committees, I mean, is there anything Janine or Rich that you think would be something that you could possibly do?
I do want to make sure we include Chris.
Come on, too, things with.
Yeah, you can't give both of them, but, um. We got NOR Cam, we got the.
You know, how about, I, how about I take myself off the fine art?
I don't know, would you be, well, that would also, well, was that the middle of the day or was that the?
Yeah.
Two thirds.
Two thirds.
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's where, certainly in the first year. Yeah, that's definitely.
I can talk to you. And I think that would be good, because that will, that will be a lot of variety of people that it'd be good to more, more people. Like NOR Cam, you're just meeting the NOR Cam members.
Right.
The, again, great people, but at the end of the day, it's, it's not a lot, it's, it's one group. Fine arts is bringing together a few different people, but, so I think that would be good.
And if we are to find, well, can we do that if you're finding it can't make the meeting, just reach out to me and I'll step in?
Sure, but that would be an extraordinary representation.
Yeah, yeah.
Action.
Well, I was trying to break you two up, but it seems like.
No.
And just for, Chris, for your information, typically what happens with the subcommittee is that when I, we, we establish, we need the next meeting, that officially committee. Right. So once we have the first organization, we will work to accommodate people's schedules. Don't, don't, you know, the same with the policy subcommittee. The policy subcommittee one is a pretty heavy one, that's, that's a lot of meetings and it's.
It's also one of the more flexible ones.
It is very flexible.
It's not tight.
It's just the three of us. Right, it's me and the two school committee members, so we can, we can certainly have a more, but just in terms of your, um, expectations, like your workload, that is a hefty one. Don't get me to agree, I mean, that's, just in terms of.
Time, yeah.
I mean, the workload has been.
It wasn't, like you said, I think you meant only like five times, you had nothing.
Which one?
The policy.
Yeah.
This year.
See, Rich, Rich and Diana, I, I think they're doing it pretty aggressive overall.
Right, and I think the reason it was very light was because Cliff, the year before, had gone through.
That's right.
And down.
It was all like two thousand twelve, thirteen, and now we're having that five year cycle, and so we're, would you say we're close to halfway? At this point? We're about halfway through section G.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're more than halfway through sections, but the heavier sections are still.
I can tell, yeah.
So halfway is probably.
It's a good time to get off.
So you'll learn a lot.
It's really good, because I, I found it very helpful, I think Diana probably did too.
Yeah, that was awesome.
It's a good, it's a good one.
It is, it is, we will learn a lot. But not.
So, so to kind of recap then, so the policy subcommittee is Chris and Rich.
Yep.
The athletic subcommittee is Diana and Janine. The evaluation subcommittee is Chris and Rich. The budget finance subcommittee is myself and Diana. The contract review subcommittee is also Diana and myself. And I. Fine arts subcommittee is going to be Chris and Rich. NOR Cam is Rich. Finance planning team is Janine and Scott. Uh, the substance abuse coalition is Janine. The special education parent advisory council liaison is Scott. And the superintendent search committee is Janine and Rich. Janine is the chair. And Diane also is still on C I P C, so I guess for four as well. Okay. Everybody okay with?
I should.
Everybody? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so that's the new business there. The next new business, we have a different presentation, we have, we're close to summer meeting schedule. Bernard, you want to walk through it?
Be happy to, it's a shame, so, because as is, uh, I think it's fair to say tradition, uh, school committee will meet twice in the summer for, uh, two purposes. One is to establish holders for the county school year and then get back to the regular business, but then I need to get back to, um, which is, is pretty typical. There have been years where the school committee has not needed a second page for, but, uh, assuming for Bowles workshop. Um, but there have been years where it hasn't been, so if you look at your, the fourth, um, for tonight, the two dates that I propose are really the same, they're the same weeks, I believe, as, um, this past summer. Maybe with the variation in July. But in any case, I'm proposing to do those two meeting dates with a workshop, once I'm established with the goals, I'm, I'm trying to, you can read the rules. So just, I'm offering the knowledge to you, because if they don't work, there's something that could certainly change. But if they work for you, then we can lock those in. And just as I add, the next meeting, um, June thirty, I will have for you the calendar and propose dates for the entire next year, so you have a business, so we have time to make changes to that. So you'll get that for next.
Thank you, Bernard. People top us listing dates for, and people may come. July twenty ninth, the first one will start at four thirty, and then we have a general, a regular meeting at six thirty. And the city, my office, six, if needed, at four thirty and then at six thirty. I don't know what I'm doing this summer, I can pretty much take time when I want, so I. Yeah.
It, that works for me. July, wide open. We can stay for the fine arts subcommittee first meeting, that's a possibility.
It might be when I'm late.
Yeah.
But they are needs.
Late there.
Yeah, late, late in the month.
Yep.
Yeah, I got the sense that they, that they might, you know, they might want to have some decisions made, you know, the start of this year and that would be a week. I can check.
Yeah.
Okay, but if you can, you can do it at three thirty.
And I also would like, as I mentioned, I'm sure this is focused, but they're getting it before the end of the year this year, too.
Sure.
If you want to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll circle that.
Or July twenty, or July twenty nine.
Yeah, so for those that I typically work with you on, uh, on policy, such, how, how circulates the information to you guys the next couple of days? It's lots of dates, but, yeah, I'm, I'm sort of working with, and if you agree with, um, with that, we can kind of set it up. And then maybe I get a better sense of what works along with that, what can you say, Julian?
Okay, so now, yeah, what, what on that? The next item is the superintendent search process. So I just provide a quick update. So we had a workshop before this meeting where we spoke, and there's really three or four different issues that we need to decide. And we settled on some of them. The first was just the composition of the committee. So obviously tonight, we voted that Janine will be the chair with Rich on it. Uh, we had a discussion about, well, first and foremost, I should say, we're very grateful that so many people have applied. We had, I think, more than twenty people, somewhere in that, somewhere around that number, that expressed interest in the, um, the search committee. And it, it's very difficult because every single person, I think most of us knew who they were, they're people that are very involved in the community, and so it was, you know, very fortunate that somebody who wanted someone to help us with this, uh, process. So from that, we had, you know, Janine and I had originally recommended eleven names, and I think we decided to, we've changed a few of them a little bit, and I think we, uh, are deciding to ask twelve people. We're not going to name them yet because it's going to be an aggressive, uh, timetable. And so we want to make sure that the people that were, are interested, that we think would be the right fit on the committee, will have, you know, the availability to serve, uh, on that committee. So, um, the chairwoman of the committee is going to reach out this week to those twelve people to see if they are available. And if they are available, then we will, you know, we have an orientation, we'll talk about the schedule in a minute, but we'll see if that will be the committee, a committee of fourteen, if everyone's available. If one or two are not, we'll look at possibly asking some of the other people if they are available. So in terms of the composition, I think we settled most of that at the workshop, that everybody feel comfortable with, with the resolution there. And then, and just to, just to say, I mean, it's a very good mix of administrators, teachers, both in district and out of district, uh, past school committee members, community members, um, you know, town, town members, uh, teachers and staff, community. Were there a, a good number of people in that expression? Yeah, not yet, staff, but just, uh, staff, um, non-teaching staff members in North Reading. We're very fortunate. Are there things to add that I'm missing from the composition?
I would just say that I think the most, the foremost consideration was making sure we had that full representation. So we're really slotting, choosing people just to make sure we've got someone from all this, from all the grade levels, uh, in school levels, and, and, and we're checking all the boxes of teachers, not teaching staff, administrators, community members. So I think it came up a pretty good list, but people should feel comfortable, like, because that was the finer.
Yeah, we have, we have parents at all, of students at all levels, we have people that have been on the search committee before, so that if not, you know, just note that Chris, you know, in his first meeting with us, jumped in right away to express, oh, maybe we need this as well. And so it was, it was welcome, so I think it's, it's good, and I like that this is a group that amongst ourselves, we have very different backgrounds, which is, I think, a really, a nice benefit of the committee. I, you know, I have to say right now, I'm really happy that Chris and Janine are with us. Um, it would be nice to have somebody that's not on their first term, actually on the school committee, so we appreciate that. And then with Chris, I think, you know, having a teacher on the school committee is, I think it's great, and I think it's great to have you guys, and so welcome. Yes, so that was the first thing we talked about. We talked about the timetable, um, the schedule and, you know, I don't want to repeat that, we're not going to go through it. We had a, we looked at essentially a schedule similar to the last time we did the search. We made a few adjustments to it, essentially as it may, so I think on May twentieth, we're going to have essentially an orientation, organizational meeting of the, of the subcommittee. So that'll be the first time that the, that the search committee will meet. From there, we'll, you know, we'll post the advert, we'll advertise right after that, leave the position open for three weeks. Just a question, again, I, I think we had talked before about an external and internal search. Are we in agreement on that, was there a discussion that we had about that?
So we've talked, we've certainly talked at past meetings, um. And I can look back and forth on this, but I, I do think an external search was appropriate to, to pull it. The candidates, whether they can, whether they can paraphrase each other. Chris, I agree with the logic. Not quite the view of the district, yeah, we can gather, yeah, it's fair, but I think that sounds like the, the question.
I tend to walk the same line as Danny and I, I believe if you have any viable candidate, candidates within the district, that knows the district, the administrators know them, and they all get on to work. Needs, and it makes more sense to stay internal, but I understand also, you know, the, the other side, where, you know, throw it out and see what should happen.
Right.
Internal search, I'm also a local committee. I'm a internal search, but I'm not part of the past on it. I don't see any other speed outside of just.
And, 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 and I don't think anybody really knows that there would be more than one. I think, I think we all know that there's at least one very good internal candidate, which, again, I mean, that could hinder the number of applicants we get. But I, I think it looks good both for the school committee and for the person that is selected. I think for us, the most important mission that we, job that we have is to hire a superintendent superintendent. And so I think that especially with four of us on our first term, it would be, I think it would look good that we, you know, at least had our eyes opened to anybody that was interested. And I actually think it would, even if an internal candidate is ultimately selected, I think it really helps that person, that it wasn't just, we didn't do anything and disappointed the person. I personally think it helps that person, you know, you give them more of a mandate, people to act. So that was my opinion, so it sounds like everyone's okay with posting external? Or, I mean, it's three of us are in.
Or a base.
I think the, my concern with the base is probably two things. Number one, it might not, because if we're trying to do most of the work with the subcommittee before July first, I worry about that. And then the, the second thing was, it's hard to be, to imagine how, where to get to the point to say, well, I kind of like this person, but I don't know if it's enough, not post it externally. I think it'd be, I would prefer to just post it and see what we get.
I don't think it was really an activation, I just thought like if only.
If only one applied.
If one person applied, then obviously we opened it up, just like they, multiple people applied internally, and we felt like we wanted to do that, we could do it differently, so we were broadening this to external, that we could, you know, take a moment to pause, and listen to that, make that decision. But that's just one alternative, we're to get it done. But that's just one alternative approach to get it done.
So, yeah, that, that might be a good approach. Again, I think it's a timing, though, just.
Where's the deadline come from? Does he know? Nobody can solve a proposal at that deadline? Yes.
I think, I think the concern was just this summer. I think trying to get the search committee with, you know, with 14 people on it, coordinate times in July and August, whatever we extended to, would be, I think, challenging for, for a lot of people. And so I think, I think we can take a vote on that. Ultimately, it's, we get to decide. I would be in favor of external. To do that, just make a formal order.
Well, I, I just see the things about, I'm going to basically take it or have it external. Both from the beginning, to all levels of control.
Um, so the first would be that if the idea is we're going to do an internal search, and then if there was only one or not enough applicants, is this what that? I feel like that kind of sends a message of, to the applicants, well, we're not so sure we're all going to perform well. It creates this feeling.
Yeah. Only if there's one or anything, but.
Right, it's a good example, but also no one likes to say, you know, I showed up and I wasn't pretty enough. So I didn't see that.
Yeah, right.
But then as to that, if, if we have excellent internal candidates, choose them. Having other potentially excellent candidates apply doesn't hurt our odds of getting any.
I don't want to be a student.
Right, that's the, like, stuff that's number one.
And if it's not going to fit.
Again, we can, we can make it whatever, whatever it is, that more people timeline, they can do that. But I think, I'd be in favor of external. It sounds like Chris is in favor of external. Is one other person in favor of external?
When you say external, you mean external.
Internal and external.
Okay.
No, we're not going to consider anybody internal. External and internal.
Absolutely. Never, never shut off. In fact, it would certainly be a, a great positive thing to have a hiring.
Yeah, and so, okay, so we have the timetable. And essentially, June 20th, we do orientation. From there, we will post, or May 20th, uh, May 20th orientation, we'll give this to you here. And then from there, then we'll, we'll make the posting. And I think we're going to leave it open for three weeks to get candidates and publish the timetable, the timeline afterward. And then to publish it, we'll make sure that the committee, people that are going to be in the committee are aware of the timelines, so.
August 20th, please.
Right, and then April 20th.
Yes, where would that be and at what time?
The.
Just I want to try to, you're going to be running this week, isn't it?
Yeah.
Just I want to make sure you have a space at the library.
I would suggest that say the media library should be more than that.
So at the library and the classroom?
Yeah, the, the one, you do the digital room.
Yes, yes, exactly. Okay, so you want, if you want to use that space, for what time?
I wish we would do it at 6:30. And I think some community members are probably going to be working every day, I think. I would lean around.
Six, six thirty is a lot of time.
Yeah.
Six thirty, I would. Perhaps, perhaps when you reach out to everybody, you could also see the timing and if, if it's a consensus, you say six thirty seven. Maybe a few people say it's going to be a little bit later or earlier.
I mean, I would, I would.
Then we'd be able to stay out.
I would say we're looking to meet at six thirty because that would work for you, I suppose.
Yeah.
What works for you.
Right, yeah, I think that's a, that's a.
So I'll, I'll, if there's a problem with that, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, again, Janine's the, the chair of the asset.
You're not blocking it. You're not blocking it.
I don't think you should be in the heading.
I don't either.
But I think, I don't see that. We, I, again.
Then you can't be on that.
Totally, I guess. But I think it's, the room is blocked.
No, and, and, and just to state for argument, we appreciate that you are assisting us, you know, and like buying new materials from the last time, so that we don't have to recreate the wheel. We really appreciate that. I think we have all the good people that are. Okay, so that's the time, the timeline of everything. We were starting to look at the posting before we ran out of time for the workshop. So do we want to, do people have comments or questions or potential changes on the post date that we proposed?
Scott, I believe you mentioned two examples.
I have, every time I see a policy, I have something. So one, on, on the first page, well, one page I paid, under qualifications, it says master's degree required. I believe one of the sample postings I saw from MASC somewhere said doctorate desirable. I don't know if that's desirable for our district or not. I don't really know why it was, but I just know that some, some of the posting that I saw on MASC said master's degree required, comma, doctorate desirable. I don't know if that's a, if what those committee thinks about that. Doesn't matter.
I hope we don't.
Yeah, I mean, it, again, just, I'm just looking from the postings I saw. I'm happy to not have that, so. Okay, any other changes or questions on page one? On page two, at the top, show experience, the second point, show experience with facilities management and building construction issues. I know that this was, this was from our last posting and the school was under construction at the time. Is that still, or is that typically a requirement for superintendents, the school construction issues?
Yes, because even if it's not just a high school, middle school, you have the.
I think, I think.
That's what.
No, it's.
Because we couldn't make it happen unless it was a project.
So I also think facility management is definitely.
Facility management for sure. I just didn't know about the, if it, I didn't know if that was specifically North Reading the last time, or if that is a, and again, I don't know if somebody's going to not apply because they don't have construction, you know, oversight experience. But if that's typical, that's fine. And then the only other thing that I didn't notice specifically was the, the plant, N R P S plan. I want to make sure we have so many of that. I don't know if that should be a.
Strategic plan.
Yeah, the, the strategic plan for the district. I don't know if that should be a.
More combination execution.
Yeah.
Experience in, in, in strategic planning and execution.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't see that that much. And I think that's been something that, you know, Mr. Bernard, you've been very good at doing. And we follow that quite a bit. And so I think it would be very important.
And we're at, this is now, is this the second plan or the first plan?
This is the, this is the second.
Second plan. And we see that value, so it's definitely something we're going to want.
Yeah, and I don't know if other districts do that or not. And so I think that was, that was one thing that looked like it was missing.
They were, but twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty.
You're in N R P S twenty-twenty-one, and so we have twenty-twenty-six, and so we do five here, which is. Right, you're five.
And I would actually probably put that as one of the first, you know, three or four bullets. I think that's one of the most important things that I, I would hope for. And before facilities management and construction issues, I want to make sure the superintendent creates a strategic plan for us and execute on it. Okay, for the salary, do we want to?
Is that something we discuss in the.
I don't know. Well, it's going to be.
I would guess it would be.
I think they want to put a range in the posting. I've seen both.
Yeah, should we discuss it and open? Oh, yeah.
Sure, we can put a range. You cannot negotiate your contract.
Right.
And we just create a, a range based on experience or quality.
Yeah.
With some of the information that you had given us and I had what Mike gave us last, last year for the ranges, I was looking to do between like one sixty-ish, one eighty.
Can I ask, Mr. Bernard, on the list that you provided, do you know off the top of your head, which of these are recent players?
Yes, I can type that. So it's a good question. So if you, let's, can I start with North Reading? So I've got five, okay, probably easy ones. Trittown and Triton are both in there, let's see. Triton is, Triton is third year. Trittown is the year four. It's either three or four, I think it's four, year four. Rockport would be approximately, I'll say eight years. I think I'm pretty close with that because I was a finalist, but I don't. Penn Tucket is new. I think this is year one, actually. Masconon is probably above. Issutown actually is two. I would say that's probably seven years, no more. Linfield is the same as maybe five. Ipswich, I'm guessing year two. Georgetown is a little long, yeah, I'd say maybe nine, I'd say ten, something like that. And Hamilton, I would say about six or seven, two or ten. And I would just, I would tell you that these are base salary figures that I have available to me directly from those, from the posts that we dropped. A lot of them have other, you know, benefits attached to them, but nothing, nothing crazy. But, you know, there are, and there's, I know that this one, he has a school party nationally, maybe. There might be like travel allowances, things, things of that nature. Including North Reading.
And Janine, would you say that's, you're telling us salary?
Um, between one sixty and one eighty.
So my, my salary is July 1st.
Yeah.
And then when, when we posted five years ago, the range was a $22 range from 145 to 165.
Yeah.
John, this might, it's not a missed little question. Schools on this list, what, why does?
Why those schools? Good question. It's, it's largely the K B A lead. So it's, it's just kind of, we keep our own database among ourselves. It's not been, it's not the super scientific. It's just, you know, but we, when we negotiate our contracts, we usually get another community to see what social sense. And it's a period that is large with K B A leads.
And it's common, and what's for your posting on there? It's common to pull the salary range, which I'm used to.
I, I, I see a lot of both. To me, I think from superintendent position, you know, in a community like this, you, you could attract people that are already into the superintendent's job. You could, you could chat, you could vote, you could attract a senior superintendent and say, you know what? I, I'm not happy in my district, but I'm, I'm involved, you know, I'm not getting one out of town. But I know my credit reputation, I might want to move over. And so I think for that, for those kinds of decisions, I think absent a salary range, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, I think they kind of need to know is, you know, that's a consideration. They're going to make it, they're going to leave a superintendent post. Or if you want assistance superintendent. I think we're, I think we're competitive in North Reading as a district superintendent. We could be doing pretty well.
And it looks on, are we, are we losing anyone if we cut our range too low, though? It turns anyone off? That might, you know, be a well-established superintendent in another district that's been there for many years, but looking for a change and the salary range is too low.
Yeah, I think, I think witnesses in reality suggest that if it's close to that, I would recommend it. Would you, if you were to ask me, I might, I might have been off a little bit. I, I, I would, if you would ask me, I would say one sixty-five to one eighty. That would have been my, my salary is going to be one eighty-one on July 1st, one eighty-one, change. With five years' experience. So I think one sixty would work. I think, I think you're absolutely right.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So this is copy.
It's a copy by the way. It might be beneficial, I don't know if it's on that list, but to kind of analyze the number of staff members, student population, and included administrators, that the superintendent would be, you know, responsible for evaluation processes. I think that may affect where the salary should, should fall.
It does have that information, but, excuse me, thank you.
And just a follow-up question. Does the posting list have additional teaching experience?
For, for qualifications, it says a minimum of 10 years of education experience, including at least three years of teaching experience, three or more years of administrative and/or central office experience. So for the salary, just, just to try to get this together, I think we should probably have this together. One sixty to one eighty, one sixty-five to one eighty. I think, what I, my only follow-up question would be, I, I looked at what the assistant superintendent here makes. And I think it's one forty-five right now, or it could be one forty-six right now, and it's maybe one fifty next year. Is that similar to what other assistant superintendent could be making? And so that's what I'm thinking, if it's an assistant superintendent who's just starting off, would one sixty attract that person or not, or one sixty-five? I don't know. Yeah, I mean, we, we did a $22 range last time. And so I would say maybe one sixty, one eighty. Maybe one sixty, one eighty. If it has a. Excellent. And I feel like we could update something, school committee. Add Chris to that. Under community profile, there's a couple of changes. Do we have changes before that? So community profile on the second paragraph, the number of students needs to be updated to 12400 or 12600. I don't know what that's right now. Do you have, do you have the word document of it?
Don't.
Who has the word document?
The electronic.
Of document.
Well, see, I'm running off too.
I'll make sure you have the word document.
Okay. Yeah, you up, you updated the student enrollment, the budget update.
Yeah, I just did, in the second paragraph, the students.
With the population, there are approximately 2,600 students attended this school.
And it's 2,400 now. It's 2,380. Excellent. Which would change that to 400 to be accurate. That, that's the number of relatives on the documents, so.
Okay.
And then a little school, I, I put the roof project, I don't know if you can do that. And then the only other thing, on the last page, the top paragraph that starts from previous page, and some of the late things, it sounds like the, the, the project is not done yet, the high school, middle school project. So for example, first slide says, project is unique in the county district. And then the two schools will share the library, if they share the library. The total campus will be 286,000. I would say is 286,000 toward the. Those are two changes. Because I think in the previous version of this, this was talking about the proposed school.
Yeah, do you want to, I mean, we could work the whole paragraph a little bit.
Yeah. And maybe, maybe Janine and Rich could.
Yeah, so we can do this, but not the gap between the meeting, but.
Yeah.
Update to current state.
I'll send.
Then we can collaborate.
That's a good point.
Because it's not like it's not a big topic, because we're going to be posting it.
And then we also have any comments on the posting? The posting would be good to be open on that. And I think that's the update on the, what we did. And I don't, I think that's what we need to decide right now. This is in random, is going to take us home policy before those people are available and get the show.
But I think they'll probably send out an email first because, you know, that way you get the response and.
Make sure we've got our way of contact.
Right, and if I need to reach out for a verbal conversation, then I'll do that. But for the most part, expect us to email. And I will not be sending out a thank you for volunteering, or wishing to volunteer. However, you know, we did make the list, or however nice it is to say that, until I get confirmation that all, if other people can do it, we can make the technical decision. And if one or two can't, then we'll come back and figure out who it is that we would, that we'd give us to replace that person.
You, uh, would you copy me on all of your?
Okay.
Okay.
Don't have to.
So you're. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on, superintendent's evaluation of Mr. Gall, or Mrs. Inriana, who wants to.
Um, I.
Be this, this is why we need a new superintendent evaluation.
I know. Um, well, I took the lead on it, so I'll do, I guess, a presentation, and I just, because there was only four of us, because now, when he stepped down, he did not send in the, the evaluation. If there was two people on proficient and two people on exemplary, I would pump it to exemplary. So as I was waiting, and I've known him longer, been on the board and stuff, so I just, just to.
To look, to look. If I may understand, you're a math college, but not a.
Over, well, obviously, he does an incredible job, we don't know that, so I feel more you go with some of the comments that were written about him. Mr. Bernard is exactly what school committee and the community looks for in a superintendent. He works hard, is well spoken, and cares. He is an educator and strives to continuously improve the school, not just to maintain status quo. His vision and diligence have directly helped to improve the North Reading school system. Mr. Bernard has an incredible ability to teach and lead others to perform at their best. He has patience and calm demeanor that allows those around him to work at their best with the tasks that he delegates to them. Throughout Mr. Bernard's long list of accomplishments while serving in the district of North Reading, you will find that there is a common theme, that theme in my opinion is excellence. For the core standards of, you will note that 50, there was a 50-50 split, proficient to a quarter. I do feel that Mr. Bernard's exemplary performance should be recognized and therefore outweighed all of the overall performance rating as such. The goals that Mr. Bernard continuously sets out to achieve are always centered around the district's mission, to provide a safe, supportive, and contemporary learning environment where the dedication to excellence service and lifelong learning is paramount. I have experienced a continuous strive to expand, lead, and exceed those, those goals, such goals. Whether it's advancing digital learning programs and capabilities, establishing and informative and positive events such as Parents University, or Pro-type. Prioritizing our, the necessary efforts to keep our school safe, Mr. Bernard never fails to meet the standards set out for him, and portrays a level of excellence, excellence that others could have learned from. Mr. Bernard brings a great mix of professionalism, organization, and most importantly, a commitment to the North Reading public school system, school community. He provides a vision and focus that have had a tremendously positive effect on our school. And not, sorry, I should have mentioned it first, that was for. Yes, the old one, thank you. Um, the next one, not all of that one, by the way. Um, he got proficient on instructional leadership. Uh, Mr. Bernard is a great leader, he has a great administrative team to work with him to carry out the vision for the district. Mr. Bernard has put in place a team process and culture that fosters students' learning and staff professional, professional development. On management and operations, overall, he got exemplary. Mr. Bernard works tirelessly across the community and district on many boards to make North Reading the town a great place to be. Mr. Bernard's detailed diligence in his work, he is great at both creating plans and executing, executing them. The area which the school committee often sees as his work is with the financial system, and he, along with the administrative team, creates an excellent budget, create excellent budget materials each and every year. Mr. Bernard holds himself and his staff into high standards when it comes to the management and operations. And this can easily be seen through his diligent and timely efforts, in dependable organizational skills, and in all output that he puts forward to the committee, public, parents, and staff. His staff also operates in the same standard, in my opinion, Mr. Bernard's leadership has a significant impact on this consistency. Mr. Bernard brings strong organizational skills to the job and has a strong management team around him. He is extremely positive, responsive, and has a very good follow-up. Along with his team, he has perfected a very effective budget process, he related. Oh, oh, my name, thank you. In budget materials, and that are clean and easy to follow. And then under family and community engagement, he got exemplary, meaning one to one. First and foremost, Mr. Bernard puts in the time necessary to engage the community. He has had nearly every school activity that is held and frequently interacted with the public at those events. In the past years, we were fortunate not to have had many or any major disputes, but he has handled issues such as blessing problems regarding placement issues well. He is well spoken, and people ultimately feel heard by him. I have personally experienced other school districts, both private and public, Mr. Bernard's family and community engagement exceeds expectations. There is an appropriate level of transparency and a high level of professionalism, and this never wavers. Mr. Bernard's heavy listening complement of accomplished events in this area attests to what I personally have experienced, being not only a committee member, but a parent with children in the district. Mr. Bernard engages with the community very effectively, is. Want to say better. M. Okay, he's whatever that is, presence of school events of all types, uses Twitter effectively and communicates effectively with the community through this newsletter, and then broadcasting us. He is responsive to the family concerns and responds appropriately. Mr. Bernard makes it a point to be seen across the district and to engage in the highest level of communications within the community. And when asked, I. Under professional culture, he is exemplary. I have no hesitation in stating that the professional culture fostered by Mr. Bernard is exemplary. Being a new member of the committee, although I have limited experience working with other superintendents, I do have experience directly collaborating with leaders and the C-Suite personnel support. Sorry.
I said, who brings up, who brings up C-Suite in their, in their comments?
I don't know.
Only one person.
For potential small and large scale companies, leadership is leadership regardless of the environment. Mr. Bernard takes his craft seriously and performs his role in a professional manner. He puts in the time to develop his team and works well with them. He cares about our district and the people within the district. And lastly, the high professional standards of the, in our PS are a testament to the leadership of Mr. Bernard. He sets a standard by example, showing his breadth for all members of the community, communicating in a clear and effective manner, promoting ongoing learning and commitment to the NRP's good. So, overall, he does a really good job, and we appreciate it.
I mean, the comments, the gall.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that I have to do that, I think, I'm not sure where we go from here.
Just my experience.
Good job.
We go way back.
Diane, anything else?
No, I think we. There's a lot of comments from there. All very useful.
So Rich said we were easy to grade ourselves. We're just easy to grade, because I, you, well, let me say first, I very much appreciate everything you've done. It's very hard to find a leader like you, and, and it's going to be a challenge, and experience, but you're very active, you're, you're an incredible person, you're an incredible leader, and I really appreciate that, I think, so.
Bernard, that's, thank you very much, and I thank you all. Chris except for you obviously, but I wish we really worked together a little more. We were very sincere. I know you're very sincere about why you, why you wanted to do this, but I, you know, I don't want to sound trite, but to the degree that I've had any level of success is because of the people that I've worked with. In a community that cares very deeply about public education, and I've said it before, and I'm very sincere, I said that I feel very blessed to have, to have been found by North Reading and to have found North Reading after 2003, to be great. Your, your comments on the evaluation are, you're very humbling, I think you're very, very kind and very generous, and appreciative of that. But I can also say to you that what you put on paper, it's hard to read in some ways, because, you know, you know, think of yourself like this in terms of how we perceive, but I will tell you all, that those that I've worked with on school rooms with more knew, that I feel, which you put down on paper, I really knew everything. I have felt that from other school room members that, that I was able to work with, so. Thank you very much for the, for the, for the, I think you're very generous, I'll take it. So thank you. Happy to see you leave that there, go to the house.
How started it, did I ask it out? Simon? Sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, routine matters, minutes, so, April 8th open session, anybody see any concerns or changes to the April 8th minutes? There are none, we have a motion to accept the minutes.
I move to re-accept the minutes from the April 8th, 2019 open session.
Okay, no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And then typically, yeah, so it'd be four to zero, because we're, Chris was there, so we're still a man standing, I guess. So, okay, so. Four to zero. The April 24th open session in fiscal year 20 budget workshop, so, anybody see anything in these minutes that go by? There are no changes.
Are we going to mess the city?
What are you going to want?
Yeah.
Cindy, it's Bernard. Can I mostly accept the April 24th open session minutes?
I will move to accept the April 24th open session minutes.
All in favor?
I oppose. And one extension, four to zero passes.
All right, before you say that, it's technically a slow open session with the budget workshop, it's not an open meeting. You want to say it?
I think that's a little bit.
That's what I said.
And this one here.
It was what I said.
Uh, open session and fiscal year 20 budget workshop, for the record. Okay, April 29th executive session. Anybody see anything?
No, but I've done the basic motion, that's a decision.
Okay. Motion, Mr. McGowan.
I will move to re-accept the minutes from the April 29th, 2019 executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes four to zero. And then, last one, it'll be the April 29th open session. Anybody see anything off on this one? Okay, changes and a motion.
I move to accept the regular meeting minutes from the April 29th open session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, and passes four to zero.
Sure.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard, I had someone come up to me, and I remember from this, so I can mark this, so I can ask you. Could you explain, Mr. Dr. Daily, when he was talking about the health and sexuality curriculum in the fifth grade? It's shown in the fifth grade, right?
Correct.
And then again in the.
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade. And historically, it has been that the girls see it in one room and the boys see it in the other?
In grade five.
Right.
I can't say it's called the grade six, but I would say, definitely the grade five.
It's that, it's that. Okay, um, and through whatever study or research that he found that integrating them is, they're portionally going to do this year?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And the parents have the ability to opt out?
They do.
Okay.
And I believe some others were helping today, or the only examples, I'll have.
Okay.
How many of us did you opt out?
You know, as, as parents are concerned, when I was showing the video for that, you know, in the January day.
Yeah.
Um, we definitely saw it integrated, but where is the person in North Reading to not have them integrated? That there's some concern, and they want, the parents wanted to know why that decision was made, so did you just? Do you stress my name, right?
Yeah, I think, I think there were a couple of things, I think there were years, personnel, school personnel occurred, that there were questions that students in the office of, it was information, that students in the office of gender, my experience as a developer, that other genders shouldn't be allowed. Nursing, nurses, particularly. And I think it's just, it's kind of the dark areas of service, the direction that the community is going with, that information can be beneficial to both gender. The film itself, and I actually, I actually liked watching it too, I did, I was like, ah, previewing the original film, and we felt that we previewed more than, more than one movie, and we found that the one that we were showing, whose content line is really, there's a real pity, which is very entertaining, it's just, including the children who are in areas of students. I like her better, it's boring, so that kind of led to the decision to re-accept the option. But the opt-out provision still exists, like I said, I believe two more provisions were out today for the student development, there's a third moving on today, but I just thought. I saw the other two for the show, and I think if anyone has a question, I'll get it, it's first, and I'll encourage them, you know, through the principal work directive that you have, and I know you, you have, you're involved in that conversation. We understand that it's, it's new for us, I think there were some questions when you did the, kind of the preview meeting, for the formal onset of that, probably this will, perhaps would like to run. But I got a sense from him that largely, not exclusively the questions were answered, but I can understand that there is something to that. There'll be, there'll be professionals, there'll be, there'll be professionals in the, in the film show, you're showing the classroom, I think you really get the response of questions that students might have, as you know.
One of the questions that, Eric was wondering is, if you opt out, could you opt instead? It's not that they don't want the child to see the film, but just saying that it would be highly uncomfortable for a girl and a boy in the same room, seeing the same thing at the same time. So instead of opting out, because there's no other choice, would it be possible that they can opt to be gender?
Segregated.
I don't, I don't think we had to do that.
Okay, well, it was one of the questions that was asked, and I just didn't know.
Sure, I, I think, I think if there, and I'm ragging on, talking about this probably, I just, I would, I would ask parents to contact us, whether it's at their school, or our, our Patrick, or the director, that just, you know, we don't want. We understand, we recognize that there's, you know, change is coming, and with that, sometimes comes anxiety, and we want to try to eliminate or certainly reduce that for parents, but. Yeah, of course, you know, I didn't, I don't want to say we're not interested in exploring other options, I saw that, I'm really excited, that's an option, we'll discuss that. But yeah, I, I, I would certainly, but I don't want is important information that I think a child needs to be aware of, not be available to. That's, that defines what, that's right, right, where I would certainly want, you know, at least explore, what could we do to make sure that the information that we give to these students is available, and gets available, because they don't want to. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. How many parents attend this?
Now, I was far as, I, I just get the sense that it's going to be on temporary, but we'll be glad. Yeah, I was far as, um, I, I just get the sense that it was only on tip of the, of the, that... It was, they check, they coincide, and we do orientation, right? For grade five, I was able to try and get, you know, it was larger, a population, but I, I agree with that. I do get the sense that it was off somewhere, but I just have to...
Watch it up.
So, I, I gave two updated gift notes tonight. Okay. Because I just want, so the first, I think the first one is one of the ones, so you just give the larger packet, there's an update to the page chambers and, um...
Oh, I see. You're updating, you're not additional, you're...
No, they're not additional ones.
There is no budget update, there's no staffing, it's about saying, it's a convention donation. I don't know what it's called, but Mr. McGowan, you might need that.
I will.
It's two, Rich.
Is the second one on our table now?
It's the first one and it's the charging rules.
Okay.
Further.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school committee vote to accept the gratitude donation of $50 for multiple donors for a scholarship to be given to a graduating senior who chose to apply administration in memory of James J. Chambers, husband of high school guidance secretary and chambers.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school committee vote to accept the gratitude donation of $100 from Daniel and Melissa Frisco to the North British High School baseball.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Ananmas.
I move that the school committee vote to accept the gratitude, a total donation of $200 from Edward and Timberley Baker to offset the costs associated with eighth grade Washington D.C. trip.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Ananmas.
I move that the school committee vote to accept the gratitude donation of $200 from Barbara and James Thorstad of the North British High School track.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Ananmas.
I move that the school committee vote to accept the gratitude, a total donation of $275 for multiple donors to offset the costs associated with eighth grade Washington D.C. trip. I'm going to read the donors, and I'm also going to circle back to the annual, the general report. Um, $200 from Edward and Timberley Baker, $50 for American Story, $25 for Stephen and Janice Sartre.
Question?
Yes.
Michael. Is it just a coincidence that those same people donated twice? The same amount? Um, Edward and Timberley Baker? It's just, either they did it twice or...
No, I think it's once.
Yeah. Probably just one. Oh, yeah, great.
Take out the single one. We were trying to hold it for a little more.
Okay, so is it two?
One.
One.
Okay. So, how, how do we retract the single one? Because it was done already. Can we just take the $200 and change it to this $175?
Two seventy-five.
Yeah.
Make it seventy-five instead?
Yeah.
Okay. Provide the motion. Second.
Second.
The motion is second.
Well, this motion hasn't been seconded, so he could just make the amendment.
So, I, I move that, to, that we amend, that we vote to accept the amended, uh, uh... Random, uh, accept the gratitude, the total donation of $75 for multiple donors to offset the costs associated with eighth grade Washington D.C. trip consisting of $50 American Story and $25 for Stephen and Janice Sartre.
Okay. All in favor? More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Ananmas. Do you want to go back to the other ones still or not?
No, that one's, that one, that one alone, so we're good. Uh, I move that the school committee vote to accept the gratitude, a total donation of $1,425 from various donors of friends and family of Charles E. Jones, for the Charles E. Jones educator organization. In memory of Charles E. Jones, former middle school assistant principal. And again, I won't repeat it. $50 from John C. Bernard, $50 from Beth Thompson, $25 from Brenda and Brian Farber. $200 from Charles Singer, $200 from Philip and Kathleen Darbey. $25 from Brian and Cindy McNally, $25 from John and Barbara Poole, $25 from George and Joan Pellet, $100 from Ray and Sandra Weers, $25 from Kristen, Marasca, Coe, $50 from Douglas and Lisa Arnold, $50 from Mary E. Reed, $50 from Sammy, Samuel and Janet Foster, $200 from Anne Marie Gallo, $350 from David and Julianne Mosser. For the next trip.
Discussion. The only thing I would just say is that was nice to give the, um, the silence this evening to encourage that. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Oppose. Ananmas.
You get to the one that you demanded. Ashley Darber was the first one to hear, so this one we can, we just put that. Or did you just not?
There's one.
Did you start with this one?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, did you...
Yeah, I, 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 I did, I did this one, the second.
You did the updating.
Yeah.
Okay, so then you did, then you...
We did do the first one on the...
Provising. Okay, so you backed out.
Yep. Um, for bachelor parents, eight anymore. Yep. I move that the school committee vote to accept the gratitude, a total donation of $894 from Bachelor Elementary School Parents Association, received from art sale profit share, profit share funds to be used at principal's discretion.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Ananmas.
I move that the school committee vote to accept the gratitude, a donation of $1,000 from Charcolts Dining Services for a scholarship to be given to a graduating senior who chose to apply to the church.
Discussion. The only thing I would just add here is I think it's great that program that is here is also trying to be involved in this school business, so I think Charcolts. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Ananmas.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to circle back to the first one I read where I did not list both of the donors. So, in the donation for the James J. Chambers Scholarship, it was $25 for Ashley Darber, $25 for Jean and Carolyn. So, thank you very much for all of you.
Thank you. Very generous community. Okay. Subcommittee update. Policy Subcommittee made an amendment second about well, or Mr. McGowan. Thank you.
We got a little bit of waste in Section G, which is a very dense section, but, uh, we had, we had, we had a couple of notes that may result in, uh, some, uh...
I think it's going to be some, yeah. If you're going to bring the whole section forward, it's, um, yeah, okay, we'll be good.
But otherwise, so this process continues.
Okay. No other subcommittees? The scheduled coming up athletic subcommittee is May 14, 2019, and 12:30 superintendent Taffet through, Substance Abuse Coalition is May 21 at 10:00 a.m. at the police station. NORCAM board of directors, we're at that, May 23 at 17:00 in the NORCAM office. You may want to ask me how to find that place. Uh, Policy Subcommittee, I think I can go. Do you?
We're back behind the, uh...
Go in and it's like way off, right?
I believe so.
Okay. Policy Subcommittee and finance funding are to be determined. The administrative report, Bernard.
Chairman, thank you. So, I think we did your spot on the table, um, or what, um, two writers know, they want to want a batch, and so just, as I typically look to, like, share a few of our copy in my spring, 2019, who's like, which went out across the district last week. It's just informational purposes. And just a reminder, um, that as has been, kind of a short tradition now, but something that I wanted to do is, we have retired staff coming into, um, to actually, to the committees to be recognized by the committee, um, for, for this, so we will bring the elementary, um, staff who are able to come on the, the June therapy. Um, a lot of the principals will be there, and the main professors will be the amount of, the best we should be giving education to school, including the elementary schools. And then on June 17th, um, something similar with, um, the second level, um, personal high school staff, so it's just something to look forward to.
Excellent. I know that my, my wife actually said that superintendent, that book actually sounds interesting.
Oh, you do, so?
Yes.
Yeah, so, like, you probably saw it, so there's at least one, you know, that people, you know, who are retiring. Several people ask me about people for recommendations. I'm going to read it.
For correspondence, Bernard.
Mr. Michael, thank you. So, just I put a copy, this is not, um, new information for most of you, but I think it's just a little, uh, something. This is correspondence that, excuse me, that I received, um, last week from the Public Education Guarding, the confirmation of the, um, payments to the town under the, um, charter of the new program on the circuit breaker. You can see that the, the district, um, is receiving $249,703. So, it was, it was timing because, as I went to the article, the transcript last week called Miss Conlon's presentation on budget. It was a reference to say something about if this were not the case, then we would have a very different conversation with the budget. So, the fact that, that, um, we, for the second year in a row, um, are slated to receive, you know, a substantial amount of money and we should, and we should, is something that is noteworthy, and has provided, will provide, very typically for us, we just moved to 20. I've said it before, but it can be understated that the work that Michael and Mike Conlon, the director of finance and operations, and Cindy O'Conne, as the directors of services, did to put together the, um, portfolio, the consideration is extensive, and maybe I now, with nearly a quarter million dollars, it's going to significantly impact your positive value of my budget because of June, July, so, so, thank you, Michael, and I'll publicly thank Cindy. I thought it was important you all seen that, but...
Any questions, Annanmas?
Thank you, Michael. It was hard work, but you are worth paying up, so thank you.
Only question that I had was, what, what number did we use in the...
So, we can certainly use 150 out of, uh, the estimated, sorry, I think, I don't know, it's a little... Provides an actual, uh, you know, profit for our, to, if we can, next year. Do you stand?
Excellent. Good with the money people are conservative. Okay. Anybody think, anybody think smart?
Always.
For future business, June 3rd, we have a meeting, uh, back at the Learning Lab. June 7th is graduation, so everybody is welcome to come to that. I just talked to you, I guess.
Just, just for, so, for Mr. F, if you have, um, you're invited to come to graduation, you will receive something in the form of, hopefully, you will be able to come, as scheduled allows. So, ceremony is at 6:15. Um, considering the convention can continue on Main Street, in the, in the high school, around 5:45. Um, we will knock it down, we'll deal with the, uh, the staff and the students, and we have a member of the community in the registration, um, to, to celebrate the commencement exercises, request a twin match shoe. I would just, please, I would remind you about the footwear, to the notes too, but because of the turf, you know, you can just be mindful with the other shoe that it's kind of flat on the bottom, so we don't do it in the history, you know, to the memory of the people that you're familiar with, that have problems, which is, I, I would just remind you, so. We're taking a sunny day, outdoor ceremony, so...
Is that your official scientific...
I wish it were, and, uh, the snow days, I was, I was significant, I mean, because I went to the W A graduation, always. Praying to the sun, it's, it's hard to believe, but it's coming up, so, with June 7th.
Bernard, June 10th, we have town meeting, we're going to meet, so that's at the, uh, Performing Arts Center. We're going to meet before at 6:30 in the superintendent conference room. We'll go over a couple of, um, more articles, check the vote on the budget, and everybody remembers, we're going to be hopefully establishing a, um, a fund for special education and putting $100 into that, so we may need to, depending on how the competition goes, if we compare to advocacy for that, if we need to. Yep.
Question? Are we meeting, uh, for some reason I have town meeting to be at 6:00? It's not coming to me with you when I follow this word. What are we? I don't know.
I don't know. I had six, so...
You have six.
I had six.
Yeah, I'm trying to picture, I don't think you said that.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure. Maybe I put six in, so I look good.
And I'm, right, and you, you're thinking, you said, um, you're executing session on the 30th, 6 o'clock.
Uh, that's what, yeah, I was like, yes, okay. I will cross that. Uh, June 17th, regular meeting at this Learning Lab. Anything else anybody have? Welcome to the board, Chris. Thank you, everybody. I am so, entertaining that motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
I so sad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Ananmas. Thank you, everyone.